Hi, everyone. Welcome to Cookville Now, your podcast about the people, businesses, and places that make the Upper Cumberland in Cookville what it is today. I am Herbert Williams, your host, and my co-host is Clarissa Williams. Welcome.
Everyone, thank you, and we are excited to bring you this series. We have been to practically all of the Meet the Candidate events, and we decided that it would be a good idea for us to host some and ask all of the candidates the same questions. We've invited every candidate. Every candidate has agreed to be here, and we are excited. We're giving everyone the same questions. We're giving everyone the same time commitment. We had thought about trying to keep this to a minute, but we're basically saying, hey, if you spend a little bit more time on this question, that's fine. We'll move into the next one, and we'll just keep it all in the same timeframe overall. So, welcome, Lauren.
Thank you for having me.
So Lauren is currently Vice Mayor.
Correct. Yes, been on there for four years, serving as the Vice Mayor.
So tell us a little bit about you to kick things off.
So, most people know that I'm not really a politician, even though I have been on City Council for the past four years. I'm a nurse practitioner. I'm a hospice nurse practitioner here in town. I've been one for seven years now. I'm not originally from Cookville, but I'm married to a hometown boy, so I kind of, you know, claim that a little bit. I've got two small children, my daughter Kennedy, who's eight, my son Palmer, who's seven, both go to Capshaw. This is where my home is. This is where we bought a house. This is where my husband's job is. This is where my job is. We own a small business here. So, Cookville is our home, and I just felt like I had a responsibility to, to serve our city and was lucky enough to get on City Council and, you know, receive the second most amount of votes and honored to service Vice Mayor for the past four years.
Great. Well, the first typical question that everybody asks you, and I'm going to ask you as an incumbent, why, what was the reason you decided to run the first time? And definitely, why the second time?
Second time. So, a little bit like what I said, I realized that this was my home. This was where I was going to raise my kids. This is where I was going to work, and I saw how well Cookville was doing and wanted to be a part of that and wanted to make sure that Cookville continued to be successful because I knew I was going to be here for a while. Another reason I ran is, and this isn't against city, the prior City Council, you know, any discrimination or anything like that, but when I took a look at who was on City Council, because I'll be honest, I did not know, and I saw, you know, five white older men, and I went, you know, if I took my concerns to them, I know they would hear them and they would try to represent them, but I don't see myself up there on City Council. I don't see a mom. I don't see a wife. I don't see a nurse practitioner. Yes, yes, very much you know. I don't see someone from outside, and I wanted to bring that perspective to the table. So, I started talking to people. They were encouraging. They said, "Go talk to this person. Go talk to this person." I prayed really hard about it, and I just said, you know, "God, if I'm not supposed to do this, just close the door." Just, or slam it in my face, whatever you want to do, but like, you know, help me out here. And doors kept opening. I kept meeting someone, and they'd say, "I want you to do this. Go meet this person." And next thing you know, I got on City Council and became Vice Mayor. So, that was why I originally ran. The reason I'm doing it again is because I still have a lot of work to do. There are still a lot of things I want to accomplish. We've done some great things, but, you know, four years in, in government world is not a lot of time to get the things done that you want to do. So, I want to continue on the good path that we've been on so far.
Wow, great.
Well, let's jump into transportation. So, we, we put a list of questions together. We shared questions with everyone in advance. We wanted to talk about transportation first as a topic because we hear it from everybody.
So, I was about to say, so does everyone else. They all want to talk about it, yes.
It's all congestion. It's road improvement, pothole, whatever you want to say, lump it into one. What would you do to improve the current situation?
I like what we did these past four years is we did do a tax increase, but with that tax increase, we specifically took those 15 cents and put them into a pay-as-you-go fund so that we could do road projects. When they came up, right away, we didn't have to issue a bond. We didn't have to go get money from somewhere else. We had that fund right there, so we could go and do road projects. And as we've gone along these past four years, we've been able to do stuff right there, take that money out, pay for it. That's been great. Then continuing to plan for the growth that's happening, making sure that we're looking at the areas that are growing, making sure those roads have capability, making sure our water, our sewer, we have, you know, not only capacity, but the ability to get out there and to promote growth in the areas that we know can handle that infrastructure increase. So, that's another way that I have think, I think that it's helped with transportation because we're trying to move it to the areas that aren't as congested right now. But unfortunately, a lot of our roads are state roads, Jefferson, Willow, 70. So, we can't, we can't go in there and fix those without T-Dot, and we have requests. We're widening Jefferson right now. We've got plans to widen Willow. We've got plans to improve the intersection of Willow and Jackson, but those are all state highways. So, we have to wait for them to come in and do it. But what we've done is on our end, we've made sure that we have everything done so that when they come, we're ready to go. So, that's another thing that I'm very proud of this city is we're proactive. We know what needs to be done. We do as much as we can, and so that when the state comes in, we're ready to get that project completed.
Great. Well, whenever that we talk about any kind of improvements or anything, healthcare is always on the table as well. And we know that a lot of people are choosing to move to Cookville for retirement age. Obviously, we have tech, and we have Allstate, and we have all of these great opportunities for education. So, we have the younger group that spills into family age, but when it comes to healthcare, Cookville owns CRMC, and over the past couple of years, we've encountered the tornado, the pandemic, staffing issues, you name it. It's been all over the place. How does the city owning the hospital help Cookville? And secondly, how does it directly attribute to the tax base?
So, being on the hospital board, I get to have a more in-depth perspective of this, and being a nurse practitioner, being a clinician. So, I feel like I add a lot to, to this issue here. The fact that our city owns our hospital is a very unique relationship. I've worked for Vanderbilt, which is a obviously very large hospital. You know, they do great work. They offer every line of service. You've got every specialist there. Every procedure pretty much can be done there, but it's a large corporation. So, there's not a lot of, you know, boots-on-the-ground kind of mentality with how healthcare is delivered. So, by owning our own hospital, I, I say, I get a front row seat as to how we deliver care to our citizens. We can take a look at what areas do we need to increase service lines. Do we need more cardiologists? Do we need more neurologists? How are we recruiting physicians? How are we getting them to come here? How do we keep our staff? How do we recruit new staff? So, I don't have someone up here telling me, you know, "You need to do this." I'm sitting there in the rooms, in the community, seeing these patients, and I get to come back and say, "Hey, this is an area that we need to improve." So, the, the fact that I have my hands on it that close just doesn't happen when you have a big hospital like that. So, of course, being a nurse practitioner, I'm very passionate about making sure we have accessible healthcare because the majority of my practice was giving patients, seeing patients in the home who didn't have access to healthcare or were below the poverty line. So, I've seen what not having that access to healthcare can do, not just to the person's health, but to, to their physical, mental wellbeing. And so, being able to know that, have that history and know what our community needs, and then take it to our hospital and say, "These are the things that I saw were lacking, and these are the areas that patients said they need help with." And being able to directly, you know, make a decision about it. It just, it doesn't happen in any other hospital that I've ever worked in.
Well, I think that the other topic that we always talk about is growth. So, we've been and experienced this massive growth, which is great. We have a strong economy. Everything's moving in the right direction. But let's say something changes. If you were faced with a change and you had to make cuts, would you, number one, we've put some things together as options. Would you, number one, scale back services? Number two, cut staff? Or number three, increase taxes?
The first thing I would do would be scale back services. I feel like that is going to hopefully make an impact, but not directly impact, you know, a person's financial wellbeing or how they can provide for their family. And of course, tax increase, that's going to change the way a person can provide for their family. And when COVID happened, this is exactly what we did. We took a look at our budget, and we said, "All right, putting a halt on everything except necessities. No one's getting anything new this year. We're going to scale everything back. Not only that, we're going to really lower the projections that we think our sales tax is going to be, so we can make sure that if it is that number, we're already budgeted for that level." And so, we did that during COVID. And because we did, we were able to actually give our city employees raises because we were so fiscally responsible in a time where we did not know what was happening. So, we've done it. We, we, I've seen it be successful. I've seen the city, and, and the amazing thing is too that not one single department head complained. No one said, "Wow, you know, I want my new dump truck. I want, you know, this." They all said, "You're right." Everybody band together, you know, hunker down essentially, and let's see what happens with this. And we did it, and we were able to come through beautifully and be able to give our employees raises. So, I do feel like scaling back would be my first choice in what we did when it previously happened during COVID.
Well, that's awesome. As we all know, homelessness is a continuing issue, and it seems to be growing. What would you do or propose to solve or alleviate the issue?
Obviously, it's a multifaceted issue. There's not one solution to this, and if there was, no cities would have a problem with homelessness, but all, all the cities do. I don't think I've found one that's experiencing growth like ours that has this under control. So, the two parts that I think are most important are, one, resources for those that need help, which we did. We made sure that our police department, we have the contract with UCHRA, their social services, so that when our police comes in touch, you know, comes into contact with someone who really needs help, jobs, housing, mental health, they can take that person, we get them straight to the social worker who says, you know, "Here are these resources right here." Because it is hard. Let me tell you, mental health, there is such a lack for it right now. That is a hard area, but we've got those resources to at least plug people in and say, "Here's where you can get help." So, that was step one, utilizing that for the people who really need help. And step two is partnering with our local law enforcement. The state recently did pass the, made a crime to camp out on city property. They had the one where state property, but now they have taken it down to city property. And people kind of said, "Oh, well, you're criminalizing homelessness." And my whole take was, no, the police don't want to arrest these people unless they're, unless they obviously have a warrant, you know, which has come in. Sheriff Eddie Ferris said that he has come into contact with people who've had warrants, and they have taken him in. But it gave, it gave our police and our sheriff just some teeth to say, "Hey, you can't be here. This is private property," or "This is city property." So, partnering with them and making sure that we support them when they go out and do find these people who are just camping out and are, you know, don't want help. They, they want this lifestyle. That, that's not what Cookville, you know, we, we want to make sure that if you need help, we'll get you help, but if that's not what you want, then Cookville, you know, we're going to take care of that. And so, I think that is one approach. But again, it, we've been talking about this for the past four years, and it is hard. There is no easy answer to it, and so, we're continuing to have that conversation and trying to find a solution for it.
Well, I think infrastructure and growth are things that we also know come with lots of different issues. Homelessness is one of those, but we also know that a lot of people are super excited about the growth, but they're also not so excited about some of the growth. So, how are, what are some things that you would propose that we could do to keep our small-town charm but not lose that growth?
So, one of the things I'm proud of that we did that I think helped with that, you know, taking the growth and then turning it right back around and investing it into our local community is we collect hotel motel sales tax, and that sales tax has, is tagged, and it has to be used for tourism, visitor industry, that kind of stuff. So, we took part of that sales tax, and we gave $25,000 of it to the Visitors Bureau because we know that what we give them, I mean, they could, you know, the return on investment with that is, is huge, how they can turn around and support the local businesses, the local economy, those shops, the West End area, downtown. They can keep those areas going by taking the money that is collected from the big industries, from the big hotels, which is where, you know, the growth part comes in, making sure we've got those good companies coming in to invest. So, we take those profits, turn right back around, invest them into our local community, and I think that's a good way that you can balance the two by also being selective about who is coming in here, making sure, again, if you're going to come here, you're going to have salaries that are, that are, you know, above minimum wage. You're going to be able to invest in Cookville. And so, that's how you, I think that's how you balance it, is you be selective about the growth, but you make sure that growth that's happening is able to turn around and invest in the local economy.
As we started our company, one of the foundation pieces of that was being a Christian-driven company, so having Christian principles.
Built on Christian principles, yes.
One of the things that just drives me crazy is when you see people out using Christian, you know, whatever it is, fill in the blank, they just insert that word as if it's just like the sky's blue today. And I have been raised in church. I have friends that are not Christians. I have friends that are atheists, agnostic, and we agree to disagree on lots of topics. But one of the things that we have heard at all of the Meet the Candidate events is everyone has talked about their faith or some version of it, and we are really interested in hearing about your faith and what, how that your faith is rooted in everything.
And everything. So, same way as you. I grew up going to church. My family went to church. I was part of, you know, active member of the youth group choir. That was always something that you, you did. You know, it was never a question of, "Are we going to church? Are we going to?" And it wasn't so much going to church, but you know, "Are you going to develop your relationship with God? Are you going to have a close walk with Him? How are you going to serve? How are you going to let His will be done in you?" So, that was, again, something I was brought up with and, and just a part of who I am. I don't know who I am without it, which is a good thing because I am nothing without, without God's will and how He wants to work through me. So, I'm glad that I had that foundation. You know, we're very, we believe raising our children in the church, obviously another very important thing. I want to be a good role model for them. I pray, you know, "God, let, let them see, you know, you through, through me when I'm raising them." I'm sure I fail at that sometimes, as every mom would probably would, yes, but it is, it's the foundation of, of my existence, and one of the reasons I firmly believe that God gave me that caretaker mentality, and He made me a nurse, and He made me a nurse practitioner. And my mom even says this. She says that when I first decided to run, she prayed that I would not run. She did not want me doing it. She said, "Please, Lord, don't let her do this." And now she says, "I see that I was wrong, that God was putting you right where you needed to be and gave you the skills because He knew that you would need to be in this position to take care of this city." And I, I'm humbled by that, that, that He has given me that ability to, you know, believe that there is good in everybody and to believe that, you know, if we do come together, we can, we can work through things. So, it is, it is just a part of who I am. I, like I said, when I decided to run, I prayed for it, and I, I, I've never heard God speak to me, but to see the way He opened doors for me, I knew that I was walking on the path He had destined for me. And so, I went along with it, and this is where I am now. And so, I feel like, at the end of the day, you know, my mom always says, "We don't know what the day's going to bring, but we know who brings the day." And so, even with this election, I know that at the end, I'm going to be where He wants me to be, and that'll be okay.
Well, we're going to take a short break, and we'll be right back after this message.
We put your company in front of the right audience. Our services include website creation, search engine optimization, search engine management, social media management, geo-fencing, video production, podcasts, and more. We can help you get found easy and affordable. We are your partner. We work with you as your team, giving you the best option for marketing. Stop by today, email us, or call us at 931-854-1313.
Welcome back. So, let's talk about the mayor's position. You are currently the Vice Mayor.
Correct.
And currently, the person who receives the most votes becomes mayor, and there has been discussion about that changing. Do you believe that should remain as the person with the most votes, or do you think it should be a standalone position?
I do think the way it's worked so far has, has been good for the city. Look how successful it is. But I also am completely of the mindset of, just because something works doesn't mean that's always how you should do it. So, I do think that as the city grows, we'll need to have that discussion about having a separate mayor election because technically, the mayor, the person who gets the most votes is historically who has become mayor. But what happens is that in the City Council meeting before the first election, before the first meeting of the new council, the City Council is the one who nominates the mayor and then votes on it. So, you know, something could happen where someone could say, "Well, I want to be mayor," and, and have that discussion. But historically, it's always been the person, yes, who gets the most votes. But I do think that as we're growing, I do think that the city manager, City Council, former of government works great. I do think that is something that we could just continue to do just because of the way, you know, we own our utilities, and we have our department heads, and they report to James, and then he comes to us. I think that has worked great, and I do want to continue that. But I do see that in, as in the future, as we grow, having a separate mayor position, not only would clarify things for people because so many people have no clue, you know, people are like, "Are you running for mayor?" And I'm like, "Well, yes, but technically, there isn't anyone who run," you know, it's so confusing. It would clarify things, and as we grow, it probably will be a necessity.
All right.
We often hear about others ask what they wish they had in Cookville or what we should have in Cookville, for example, a Target or...
That was my answer.
Or a Home Depot.
Yes.
So, I know what you're going to say. Why would you like to see here is in that, I guess in that arena for retail, or it could be food, restaurants, or whatever?
I, I am a big proponent of local businesses. I do think that that just adds, you know, something special. That is something that you can say that, you know, no one else has, or I, I do, I think local businesses, they do, they care more about what they do in this city, and they always want to, yeah, turn around and invest back in that city. So, anything local, I'm always going to support if it is a shop, if it is a restaurant. Always the restaurants because right now, I'm not cooking dinner, and I don't know when I am going to cook dinner again. So, the local restaurants around here know, we call it and get takeout. So, I do appreciate those local, you know, places that we can support. But I mean, yes, you know, a Target, whoo, that would, that would be fun to have.
Yeah.
And Cookville already has, you know, some great, you know, large corporations in, in retail and restaurants and things like that. So, I think we have a good mix, but if there's a local business that comes in, I'm always going to support it first.
Okay. Now, you answered some of this earlier, but when it relates to your mother, but what did your family think about, and this is your overall family, your immediate family too, think about when you wanted to run four years ago? What did they feel or think about it, and what do they think now?
So, it's actually interesting. My grandfather was actually the mayor of Minden Hall, Mississippi, a little tiny town, and this was, you know, back in the day where the mayor got called if the garbage didn't get picked up on the right day or the neighbor's dog was barking. And so, my dad had a very negative connotation with being a politician of a city because he saw his father, who, you know, it was a small town, and he was constantly bombarded with issues. So, of course, my dad was, "Oh, please," you know, "I don't know if you want to do this," and my mom as well. But my husband, Wade, from the get-go, because someone actually reached out to me and kind of said, "Hey, I think you should run for City Council." And I, I audibly laughed out loud. I was like, "Yeah, no, I'm not a politician. I, I don't even know how to do that." And I called Wade laughing, and I was like, "Can you believe this? Someone thinks I should run for City Council." And he went, "Yeah, you should do it." And I went, "No, I should, no, I'm calling you to tell me not to do it. What are you talking about?" And he said, "No, you should do it. You'd be great at this." And when I realized how much confidence he had in me, and you know, he's my person I go to, my sounding board, you know, and he said, "You should do it," I went, "Okay, I'll try this." And he has been, I, I could not do this without him. He has been my rock. He is, he is that person, you know, "Hey, come off the golf course. I, I gotta go to a meeting," and he will begrudgingly come off the golf course. But it's fun too because my kids are of the age now. When they were little, they just thought it was fun to see Wheaton on billboards, or not billboards, but you know, signs. But now, my daughter comes and does door-to-door with me. She loves it. She, she thinks it's so cool that mommy is making these decisions for, you know, where she lives, and so, they have gotten involved. And my, my son keeps asking me, "When is versus day?" He calls Election Day versus day because I verse people. And I was like, "But that's actually creative. It's called Election Day, not versus day," but he, you know, he kind of gets it too. So, they are very supportive about it. But yes, four, four years ago, I, I even was like, "Why am I, what am I doing here?" But now, I, and my family, now my mom and dad come up for, you know, Election Day. They came up for my campaign kickoff. They're big supporters, so they're proud of me too.
Well, we love Cookville. We know everybody that comes to Cookville falls in love right away. So, there are a couple of favorites. You know, we can sit here and talk about restaurants. I, I love Bubba Gandy's and Seven Cents.
Oh, gosh, right. Yes, yes.
There's so many good places here. If you were going to narrow that down and pick a favorite destination, event, or place, what would you, what's your go-to Cookville thing?
Two, probably, I would say. And first is the West End area. I feel like just has so many local, local shops, restaurants. You've got the ice cream for kids. You've got the depot. It's, you know, we just recently did the sidewalk improvements down there on Cedar. So, you know, the city has taken some time to really improve that area, and as we move forward, that's actually an area that we'd like to maybe make just for pedestrians, just to walk around, that kind of stuff. So, I think that if you want one place to hit up a bunch of great things in Cookville, that's a great area to go. But I was not a nature hike-y person when I first moved to Cookville. My husband was. And when we started going to Fall Creek Falls, Cummin Falls, but you know, that are 10, 15 minutes away, and there are these beautiful areas, you just don't even realize the, the natural resources that Cookville has around you, and it's such a, you know, I always try to tell people, "We've got these great things, but you go 10 minutes outside the city, and you have got these beautiful natural resources." And so, that has become, and my kids love it too, so that's actually become one of my favorites, is to go to those, you know, those state parks, those, those local parks and go explore nature. That's, that's one of my favorite things about Cookville lately.
Well, during the other forums that they've had for the candidates lately, what is one question you personally wish you had been asked about yourself or about the campaign?
Uh, well, about, I think, you know, some of the questions about what we've done for the city, you know, some of the infrastructure questions, the, the projects that we've done, the, the proactiveness that we've had in planning for the, the growth. I would like to talk on those questions because I know the last forum I got, you know, "Why do you want this job?" And, you know, what was the other one? What, I can't even remember what the other one, "Why would you be good at this job?" And I thought, "Well, I, you know, I've said that. I want to talk about the things that I've done." So, I'm very proud of the things that we've completed. You know, talking about the pay raises for, for our employees, I feel like that's something that I would love to be, love to talk about more because I think it is so important that our employees and that the citizens know how much we value the people who work for Cookville and dedicate their time, and we wanted to make sure, we knew we were behind on salaries, and we need to increase pay for police, pay for fire. Those are two, you know, departments that I'm very passionate about. So, I, I would have liked to ask, answer some questions about that, but you know, I'll take the, "Why do you want to be here?" Those two.
That's great.
Well, I'm going to jump in and ask a quick question that is more about democracy and our country. You know, right now, I personally feel like our country's not moving in the right direction. It's like a train wreck. And one of the things that people can really do to change that is vote.
Yes.
So, we have had such low voter turnout for Putnam County. It's, it's just been really, really low. What would you say to people about voting, or even younger people, it's their first time to go and vote? What would you say? Because we've got early voting through July 30th.
July 30th.
And Election Day, obviously.
August 4th. Yes, I, I think my biggest thing is I say, you know, "If you come to me and complain about something, the first thing I'm going to say, 'Well, what have you done?'" And if you haven't gotten out there and voted, and you haven't, you know, you know, at least come to me and say, "Well, hey, this is a problem. How can we work on this together?" You know, that is, that is your voice. You get to decide who represents you. I, the concept of not voting to me is, is so foreign because I don't know why you would not want to make sure that the people who are representing you are the ones that, you know, have your ideals and, and want the same thing for where you're living. So, I just don't understand that. I'm going door-to-door right now, you know, go, you know, and, and saying, "Hey, I'm looking for your support. This is when early voting is right now. It is the worst weather to do it in right now." I mean, you know, being from Mississippi, so it's kind of okay, but I'm going out there and personally asking people, "Please go vote. Get out there. Go tell your friends to go vote." I actually helped with a girl here who, she is a Realtor for the Hispanic population, and we discussed, A, how low the voter registration was to begin with, and B, how underrepresented that, you know, that population was. And so, we worked together to essentially to kind of do a campaign to let them know, "Hey, this is how you register to vote. This is how you vote. This is when you vote." So, campaigns like that, I know, I think Monterey High School that was did a campaign to get all the 18-year, the seniors registered to vote. I'd love to do a campaign like that for our local high school. If you're going to be 18 by the time of the next election, let's get you registered to vote. So, that's something that I actually, if re-elected, I would love to do, is to work on those populations that don't know about voting as much, or the populations that don't, you know, don't get out there, the younger ones, and get them involved and help them with the process so they can go vote.
Well, looking back to the younger Lauren Wheaton, what advice would you give yourself then if you could go back and talk to the younger you?
Sleep more, for sure. Take those naps when you can. But no, I, I think I would tell myself, be present, enjoy the moment that you're in. I am unfortunately type A personality. I think I'm sitting with some type A people as well. But, you know, we're constantly planning for the next thing. I'm always like, "Okay, what, what's going to happen next? Make sure I'm prepared for this." And that's also my proactive attitude. That's just how I am in healthcare. You're always looking for the next thing. But when you do that, sometimes you miss those, those moments that are precious. And, and so, I would tell myself, be present, enjoy the moment that you're in right now because it's going to pass. And, you know, when you're sitting there planning ahead, you don't get to really realize what, what's happening right now. So, being in the now is what I would tell myself, and then, yes, take the naps.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What else would you like to share about yourself, why people should vote for you, or whatever you would like to say at this point?
I think, you know, first off is my experience. I've been on the City Council for the past four years, and we've done a lot of great things, and our city has been through a lot with the tornadoes, with COVID. Cities, you know, have never experienced that, and our city was able to come through those closer, bringing our community together, and then on top of that, our city has been successful through all that. So, I think experience right there gives me that, you know, it has prepared me to be a stronger leader for Cookville. The fact that I am a nurse practitioner, a mom, a wife, those are qualities that I couldn't get rid of if I wanted to. Those are who I am, and so, I get to bring that perspective on to the City Council, and I think that's something that people will need to know. I, I'm not a politician. I don't have an agenda. I literally do this because I love this city, and I want it to be a place that people can raise their family because this is where I'm raising my family, and we're going to be here for a long time. I tell people, "Cookville stuck with me, whether you want it or not. I'm not moving anytime. I'm not even moving out of my house because I'm never moving again." But, you know, I, I'm here, and I want to stay here, and I want to make sure that our, not only our citizens, you know, can, can have a great quality of life, but they can thrive, and they can buy a house here, and they can raise their family here. So, I want people to know that, that this is, I have a vested interest in Cookville because it's my... So I want people to know that, that this is, I have a vested interest in Cookeville because it's my home. And, and finally, you know, this is, this is what I've been doing for the past four years and I've still got a lot of work to do and a lot of things that I want to accomplish. And so that's why I'm asking for people's support again.
Well, we have a lot of young people we work with and I ask them, if you were going to talk to the candidates for city council, what would you ask? So we have some fast fun questions.
I like this. Okay.
So number one, are you a gamer?
No. I know. I am horrible with technology. I am not a gamer at all. Yes. I hope that doesn't lose me any votes. Nothing against gamers. You just, you would beat me every time. Yes.
That's nothing.
That may gain you some votes.
Exactly. Yeah. You can, yes. Uh huh.
It's, it's just fun to ask these questions.
I love, I love this. This is what I enjoy. Yes.
So if you were going to pick a dessert and you had cake, pie or cobbler, which one would you pick?
Cake every time. Yes. Which is interesting because for when I got married to my husband, he didn't want cake. We had to have blackberry cobbler was his groom's cake. And then I had the, the five tiers with a different flavor in every one. Yes. So opposites do attract. They can come together. But yeah, I'm cake every time.
So if you are going out to eat or you can choose to eat in, are you going to choose to be at home or go out to eat?
Go out to eat every time because they have to do the dishes. I don't have to do them. I, cause, cause we know who does the dishes. I mean, maybe you do the dishes. I don't know. That would be.
Uh, probably 70% of the time.
Can you train my husband to, can you show him where our dishwasher is? Cause he can't find it some, somehow, but no.
He, he's a very good cook. He cooks more than I do.
Do you really? Okay.
Actually enjoys, but what I do is I cook for them and then I cook for me because I'm plant-based. I have been for seven years. Yeah.
Well, then I want what you're cooking for them.
They're more chicken.
But yeah, I'm going to go out to eat if I can. Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we have had so much fun with you being here today and we thank you for coming.
And don't forget to visit us at the Bizapalooza Tuesday. We're going to be interviewing and visiting with folks over at the Leslie Town Center. And, um, we are Cookeville now, your local podcast for, about the people, places and themes that make the Upper Cumberland and Cookeville what it is today. And thank you so much for watching.
Thank you.